And let it be a short process. And the same has to happen with the Park and Cemetery. You've got to do a good job of hiring the replacement. But you're not going to get the same individual.
We're not, so are you still of the mindset that you operate more efficiently without the boards? Or you think we should keep them?
You know, as far as people that volunteers that stick their papers down Achilles every three years and signatures and run for office. But I think there's a certain cumbersomeness to it. And I think if you want to streamline a little bit, I think a direct line of communication from the town administrator to the superintendent. These guys have reacted to the town administrator's position 150% better than they ever expected that they would. They had two choices. They could have said, "I don't answer to you. I answer to the water road commissioners or the board of Park and Cemetery commissioners." But nature and personalities, people made it work. So that, you know, there was communication and interaction between the town administrators that we had and those people on a day-to-day basis. But that ain't is not necessarily going to be solved with an old person.
How much time would you say your boards, the water and the road commissioners, spend a week working with the superintendents?
An hour a month.
One hour a month?
That's the meeting.
Okay.
The two respective boards you have now let us do our jobs.
Okay.
I had a two years, as far as a bunch of this concerned, to look at it makes sense. And I've said it to him, and I've said it to him. You've got to live with this. I don't. When they build the bridges, or when they pick a truck or, you know, a green sand brown filter as opposed to the other kind.
The non-green sand.
The non-green sand. These are the guys that live with the day-to-day.
Yeah.
I don't get the calls when the water's brown. It goes to the water department. When I realize that something had to be done, then yeah, we put some time in and solo the process. So we have a dream with that. And I think that's where the commissioners were helpful.
It's funny, because I did get a call when the parks were closed. So I had no problem tracking me down about that.
And I think, you know, to Marshall's point, it's we're comparing apples and oranges here. I mean, Lynn and I have met about pickleball. I mean, so there's, and the point about a recreation person, a recreation director, I think would be phenomenal. I mean, there is such a need, there's so many things that we could do with camps and clo- but as commissioners, we just don't have the time, the energy to do that. Ours, it's a different relationship. We actually have to approve when somebody has plots of land. It's not Steve's decision alone. If somebody wants to have a particular monument or something in the cemetery, it's a decision that we vote on.
Got you.
So there's, you know, there's differences. Each board is a little bit different. But ours tends to be, we take Steve's recommendations and we work together and in a mandatory sense. But we are getting the questions. And we are getting the questions, when, are you closing down that tennis court? What are you going to do here? So, and we take that seriously. You know, we were elected, so we want to make sure that we are representing.
Maybe we should be talking about something we could do to make it easier and better in the form of the recreation department.
You were talking about.
Take a plan.
That's going to be part of the total thing. But I would like to suggest, we've been talking an hour, this is the beginning of the conversation, not the end. This is not the only time. I certainly will be interested in reaching out to some, if not all, of you individually and so on. And I suspect the rest of us will. Not trying to make this an endurance exercise, but wanted to start the conversation, like, you know, we're trying to keep our ears open. And as I really want to emphasize, we felt we should start talking with those of you who are at the heart of it. People in town, lots of opinions aren't in your seats. Yeah, right, you know, exactly. So what I'd like to do is, unless there's something critical that you feel we really should add to the conversation right now, ask if we might go on and just take care of a couple of other things while you're here that relate to what's going on. Is there anything else that's important for us to say? Do you have one more thing, Lynn, or also, not that yet, but?
No, the only thing I'd say is thank you for coming in. I mean, this was just an unusual convergence, where we have five key positions that will become vacant. And at the same time, we're trying to look long-term at the downtown and what we're doing as a town. And the GRC is looking at the town administration position. They all kind of came together and it said, "We should get everybody into a room and just kind of talk about, this is a unique opportunity. What is the best way to move forward?" And that's what this is. There were no preconceived notions so much as, there were some things also that Robin came across from a, you know, a legal protection of the town perspective that is hitting multiple departments, not just anything that we're talking about right here.
Goes well beyond just the.
Above the beyond.
I think you're going to get to retirement, so the positions are going to have to be filled. And we'll still be talking about this.
Before we can resolve anything, I think is what you're saying, in what we've been discussing here, we're going to have to deal with some retirements. Okay, thank you. That's something that we need to keep in mind.
And that's actually the next thing on that I want to do while you're here. Not trying to put you on the spot, but to put you on the spot. Do you have any updates on retirement plans? Anything official?
I can tell you one that isn't.
The point being, I know that there's been some work that's been done. I think, Robin, you've been helping work on job description.
Yeah, we're updating all the job descriptions. And Dave's job description for his position has been generally updated, but the commission is going to.
We've already done it. And it's done, it's going on it yesterday.
I just have to get it back to you. They go over it on at the meeting.
And I've offered to post that position for them. But again, the question, you know, just that we go into this, or that the town goes into this, having a discussion at least first. So it'll be posted on the MNA website. And internally first.
Internally first, for one week?
There's nothing that's written, but that's been past practice, so I'm going to continue that.
One of the things, I'll speak for myself here, but I also know from conversations with some of the other board members, boy, when we have a qualified candidate, we really like hiring from inside. We talk about dedication, understanding, experience, there are just so, so many reasons.
And you don't like worldwide searches?
Yeah, my searches, we found a person, he's in this too. But one of the things that we want to do is be sure that we look as far and wide as we can in need to, to get the quality we want when we do replacements. One question is, since we're not too sure where we're going to go, but we know we're going to have to decide within months, not a year, if we're to do something that perhaps would be on the warrant, does it make sense to consider the possibility of an interim position, which would be easier to hire for, easier to promote from within, to kind of keep things going so that?
What does interim mean?
Interim means they are acting with the full authority, just as Robin is, full authority of the superintendent, but it does several things. The hurdle's not as high in terms of the skills we'd be looking for, so it might make it easier for people who've not had the training that might otherwise be there. Gives an opportunity for folks who've not had the chance to do supervision and management at the level that the superintendent would need to, to show their stuff, which might make them stronger candidates in the larger pool when we went full-time. I want to ask if that is something that would be worth considering.
I don't know what others would say, but, and I don't mean this sarcastically. I've been pushing around 52 years in highway departments. I've never dealt with an interim highway superintendent. Would you apply for it?
You know, if I was inside.
Interim says, well, we might keep you, we might not keep you.
I guess what I'm saying is.
You're either going to commit to the person, or we're not going to commit to the person. I guess is what I'm saying.
I don't think you're going to find somebody from outside who will come in and do a job that might change, go away, or be open again in six months. The question is.
Saying is, if you have someone within, would you consider?
Would you consider doing that as, if it's an opportunity for that person, I'd be quite honest, show the stuff. If they could do it, we'd like to know, and it's a little bit like.
What level would you pay them?
I don't know on that. I mean, I'd have to take a look, but obviously if they had greater responsibility, they'd be getting greater pay. They might not be getting full superintendent.
Well, there are stages in each.
Give you a model. And again, no decisions have been made in this area, but the work that Chief Haglund has done in terms of supporting Captain Haywood, in terms of teaching the ropes, bringing them up, giving increasing responsibility. We now have a sense of who Captain Haywood is, how he operates, and a sense of how, if he applies for the position, which I think we're thinking he may very well do, what it would mean to the town to have that. And I would argue that that's probably been his benefit to have had that opportunity. So as I think about.
It has to be the first chief that's ever done it.
Might be. But just because it's first doesn't mean it's worse.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I personally, I guess I understand what you're saying, but I think to think between the months of, you know, October and May, you're going to be ready to put on the ballot that you want with the makeup boards and so forth. I think it's unrealistic. I think you need to do more research and really look at things.
You don't think it's going to come this May?
No, I don't. I really don't. And I would say that you should look for the best candidate you can. It's a pretty responsible position.
Oh, I agree. And I'm not saying we couldn't do that.
Yeah, that's your, that's your question.
But it's interesting, Phil, because my question is, you say we ought to look for the best candidate we can. My understanding is at this moment, the road commissioners will be doing it, not the town. Wouldn't be our new town administrators weighing in. It wouldn't be the board selectmen weighing in. The road commissioners would be the only ones making that choice. My question is, if we're going to have a town administrator here, if we ended up deciding to eliminate the boards, the commissioners, I'd be very concerned that that person really understands the implications of working with the town administrator. If it came with strong creds in that department, then fine, not an issue. But it opens a question in my mind as to whether that's the best way to hire.
I think they're two separate issues, to be honest with you. We've got a, we've got a position to fill, and we should fill it. And so the person, the job can continue to be done the way it should be done. As a board, you don't even know if the townspeople will let you do it. It may say we don't want them.
Oh, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know either. I'm just, I was asking the question as to whether until the decision is made, those intermeasures.
It's true on his side. You know, I, I just think, it's two separate areas.
Being, being on the board of road commissioners, I personally feel fairly confident that we will find a good replacement.
All right, I'm sure we'll find a good replacement, and I think that we have the qualifications to do the job. And I think we would approach it with the same interest and so forth as if you were doing it on the town administration.
I don't want to go there at the moment. I want to ask the parks and cemetery. Do you guys feel fairly confident that you can find somebody that can adequately take Steve's place? Are you in a position where you feel good about that at this point in time?
I don't know that we're there yet, no. Okay, no. But the process isn't as imminent as.
Yeah, I understand. It's a longer-term process, yeah.
And it's not a demand that the commissioners do it. And no, you can't have any help. You've got to do it on your own. You can get help, support, and other things like that. So I want to presume many places, I mean, even we, using search for defined town administrator. I think we know what we want, but we're getting help and doing it. So I don't want to presume that your process would necessarily mirror what the road commissioners are prepared to do. I just want to kind of test the.
I think that each of us will reach out to wherever we feel we need to reach out for some help, some guidance, some input. I mean, we did that when we selected the architects for the water treatment connect and so forth. I mean, the town administrator was part of that whole process. And I think both boards are responsible in that. You know, we're not going to say, "Oh, no, that's not your purview. You can't do this. Can't be here." You know, it's, it's not the way this thing has worked for at least the 30 years I've been sitting here. And I don't think it would, it would all of a sudden break down.
Because I've been here nearly as long.
Any final comments on this topic, Jim?
With our board, when the transition and the change does come, I'm willing to support the board and come in and help with that transition too. So, you know, you've got to have the smooth transition. I know when things changed and things were combined in our departments, it was a real rough road. I would, you know, had to learn the whole procedures at the cemetery by myself and so on. So, but I'll make sure that we will make it.
Any final comments?
So just for the record, even though I run around rattling off the days as they go away, I have not given my notice.
I understand. I was giving you a chance to say, "Yes, here it is." But.
So will you guys post a job before you?
No, we're not going to.
No, that's why I'm making that statement. The job can't be posted or advertised until I give my notice.
No, we're not going to.
I have a few more ducks to get in a row.
And that's okay.
If it is the earliest that you might do something, if you did something.
If you're earliest?
Yes.
I guess that's paid to stay December 31st. It could be later.
Nothing before that?
Right, no. No. I've discussed this with my board at length, as they have a plan.
And for example, we maybe also make it through the winter with.
No, we'll see.
We'll see every bit we can get.
Not before December 31st.
Supposed to be a light snow day.
No snow's good for me.
Listen, I really want to thank all of you. Oh, Greg, yes.
Just wanted to comment, I know the water board on a monthly basis deals with a lot of issues that elected board should handle. And I think if you eliminate the boards, that's going to shift a fair amount of work for the selectmen. And I think before you, as part of this process, you might get a better understanding of what those.
That's why I say, one of the mayors this year, because they have to do some research, but they're really going to go and understand what the boards have been dealing with and see if that shows switch to the board's.
Yeah.
The meetings could get a little bit long.
John and I are on different pages. I think that John would like to do it this May. And I keep saying to him, in my opinion, this is a major change. And it's going to be a year or two, in my opinion. So Gretchen, we're not trying to, I personally am not trying to rush into this thing.
And the less it's clear that we have a consensus on how we need to move forward, you know, let's aim for this May, but it may just not be able to happen. I mean, this is a process, and I'll be honest, I don't know as much as somebody like Boyd does, Dick does, who've been here a lot longer involved with this. I must say, I feel a whole lot better about having a general understanding and believing that we're not miles apart on what something might happen. And it's got to be a collaborative process. I don't see this as just, you know, board selectmen saying, "Okay, get ready, buddy, big change."
I'd like to correct something that Phil said in his opening statement. He said he was violently opposed to forming a deputy. I think you ought to change that word to adamant.
From a legal perspective.
Change that to adamant.
I know we talked about how to skim the surface, but the cemetery does fall under statute.
Yes.
114, it's a totally different program where the commissioners are the sole caretaker by law of the cemetery.
And we may, even if the, and I'm not saying this is something that we want to take on, but even if the cemetery came under the selectmen, we might still need to have a board to handle things. I don't know. One of the lessons that I've got right here in my notes is I can learn a lot more about both the legal requirements of what boards do in each of these cases, and they're not the same, I understand. And the second thing is, practicality, what do you do? Because if this work that you're doing is going to be picked up someplace else, and we suddenly get rid of a board, we have to have a plan. And I just don't know. I speak for myself, I'm not knowing. I don't think all of us are completely clear on that. So maybe it will take a year to fully understand that.
It's been an evolution. I mean, when I came to town, the highway superintendent ran for election, and the water superintendent denied his appointment by the selectman, I believe. And the cemetery superintendent ran for election. I don't think the park.
No, we were appointed.
Yeah. So that's evolved. And I can remember when the board was formed for the highway, Chris, when we first were formed, we didn't appoint the highway superintendent. We recommended to the selectmen for their appointment. But one of the members of the board at the time felt it was time to take over the whole responsibility. So it was changed by law. So it's been an evolution, and I think this is just more part of that evolution. But May is a short time for you folks with all the other things you do. To really come to understand what each of us do. When I say each of us, I don't mean individually. I mean, this is what the highway board does, and this is what they worry about, and this is what the water board does. This is what they worry about.
I'm coming to appreciate the whole situation is a little more complicated. It doesn't mean that, you know, we can keep an eye out for possibility, but if it ain't going to happen in the way it meets.
You're welcome to come to our highway commissioners meeting every day.
Yeah, you might get a little rougher than he does. A lot of towns don't have these boards.
Yeah.
They just, we don't have them at all. More towns don't have them than do have.
We're going to continue our conversation internally. I think we'll be reaching out more in the future and so on. And I want to emphasize that anyone who feels the need, desire to share thoughts, feelings, concerns, and so on, please let us know individually or collectively. It is important, it's be seen as a process that is. We're trying to develop a consensus over time. A lot of that means we spend time learning to talk the same language and decide A or B, this or that, and so on. Just beginning, so thank you all very much. Dave, do you want to?
Just an observation. From what I've seen on a lot of the boards, they bring tremendous institutional and industry knowledge focused on one area. They don't have a lot of diversions. And for the volunteers that do that, it's an incredible benefit to this town, from what I've seen. That's almost irreplaceable.
I've said for years that this town is lucky to have the volunteers and the employees that it doesn't.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thanks so much for coming and for all the insight.
Good. You're welcome to stay, but we're going to go talk about other things. I guess the next thing on our agenda is the FY20 goals and objectives. Concerned, we've spent a lot of time on this very worthwhile. Let me just ask the board members, to what extent do you feel we're kind of approaching something workable with the draft that I've made so far of FY20 goals? Do you think it's going to take a lot of work?
Well, I think there's been some things there, but we really haven't. They're there, but we haven't talked enough about them.
We haven't had much of a discussion.
We haven't really had, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to need.
I think we're close, but.
So here's what I'm going to suggest we do. Keep this meeting being too long. What if we take care of some of the other little things we have? The workplace violence policy, the minutes, and then come back and agree to spend until five? Is that fair? Until five, discussing, recognizing that we're probably going to have to have one more conversation at least. Does that make sense, Dave?
One more conversation?
That we take care of some of the little things we have.
Yeah, and then have.
Then we'll, then we'll talk about goals, town goals, until 5 o'clock, and not expect that we will necessarily have finished by then. And if we have to come back one more time and continue a conversation.
That sounds good.
Okay. So on that basis, workplace violence policy. Robin, you've been meeting on that. Do you have?
Yes, I've been meeting with both Lynn and Dick on this. And I think what's before you is what we've agreed to. And I would be looking for the board to authorize this to be distributed for input from the employees, department heads, just input, you know, and in particular, the unions.
And we recognize that having a policy does not prevent violence.
Oh, I understand.
What it does do is.
If it were that easy.
If only.
But it gives us some fences to point to and say behaviors outside of this and outside of that. It helps define things so that if a situation occurs, there's much way to clarity about what is considered inappropriate, what is not, and in many cases against the law.
So this would ultimately be distributed to all employees? They'd be required to sign it? New hires would be required to sign it?
And the other thing that goes along with this, we talked about, are actual procedures and then training. You have a policy, even if people don't understand exactly what to do and what it all means and their role in it, then it's not going to be effective. So it's one of three components.
This is very common in private industry, almost now. Five years ago, you didn't see them, but now there are many, many companies require these sorts of things. So we're not being out of place.
So this is referred to as workplace violence. And we've had a discussion, as you know, about this. I've had, I had a bunch of markup on it, and it's in board docs, and I talked about it at the last meeting. Didn't get to all the details. But some substance is that, the last thing that we kind of talked about when we got together on Tuesday was that I felt there was, that violence was a physical violence that we needed to deal with, and that the words things in there probably didn't belong. So very clearly and wisely, Robin said, "I've had a lot of experiences there. Bullying and that sort of thing in a workplace is not acceptable, and we need to address that equally." And so I agree. And so I say, what we have, we should go forward with. However, in thinking about it after, I realized that what I'd ask is that we approve it with the knowledge that we need to go back and create two documents. One, which is a workplace violence document, and another one, which is a workplace bullying document. Because it's so very different. And that's, and that's why we're having trouble with some of these things. So I have no problem moving forward with this, as we've worked hard on it, so to speak. Robin has, Robin's done the work on it. But it's something that we can begin with. But a recognition that we, in time, would like to go back at this and create it instead, two different documents. One that's clearly a physical violence, which is immediate, a problem. People get hurt, whatever. Somebody comes in with a baseball bat and swinging it around, I mean, that wants to hit somebody. Yeah, that's physical violence. We need to have a way to deal with that. And then the bullying, as far as how that relates to calling the police and all this sort of thing, will be very different, I think. So with that, I'm willing to go ahead. But I will, since we're pulling this out, these are words that I had put in, and they've been in the documentation, but it's in the preamble, and first, the purpose of the thing. I consider adding one sentence to this.
Did you discuss this with Lynn and with Robin? Because I understood this was what came out of your common conversation.
Yes, yes, your original.
And I was not expecting any additions or changes at this time. You had sat, you had sat with Robin. I was not expecting any addition changes. You have another change to make?
This is a change that I had that has been there since.
Okay.
A week and a half ago, or whatever.
Okay.
Two weeks ago, whatever. And it's a sentence that I had. It's a discussion.
Well, no, I think John's point was that three of us were supposed to get together and discuss.
This is my charge, I need to come up with a talk.
That we felt comfortable with. And when we left the office, this was a document you said you felt comfortable with.
I don't want to open this too much, is what I'm trying to.
Yeah, let me just offer this sentence up. For discussion. At the very end of the first paragraph, "This policy is not intended to stifle respectful spirited discussion or debate of matters relating to the town government." It's, if in fact we're leaving in the quote bullying and things like that, it might be an interesting thing to put that sort of sentence in. I'm ready to go with it as it is, but just for your consideration, because we've included all this word stuff, that nothing, nothing in it suggests we cannot have spirited debate about things that relate to town government amongst the cells, with other people, whatever else. It's a thought. But I'm willing to go with it as it is.
I appreciate that, Dave. I appreciate that, Dick. Dick, one thing I would say about workplace violence and trying to split it off from bullying. There was a wonderful example, it's been in the news just recently, of that girl, and this was in a school context, but that girl who was texting with her friend who was threatening to commit suicide. And she, it was emotional violence that she was exhibiting towards him. And it ended up in physical violence. He committed suicide. I think the line between emotional violence and workplace violence is increasingly being seen. Physical violence and emotional violence in law is increasingly being seen as very related. So I would say, if you wanna try and break them apart and come up with two separate policies, you're always welcome to do that. But I think it is important that we do keep them together because emotional violence oftentimes causes much longer and much more tragic. It has much more tragic impact on individuals than even the physical violence does. So that's the reason that from my point of view, keeping them together is not only preferable, it's essential in my personal opinion.
Robin, have you experienced the need for two documents anywhere?
No, because I think sometimes if people threaten somebody, how do you decide if it's physical or emotional? To me, I'm okay with this. I think this is the right way to do it. Investigation, you know, having investigative process, it could be both things, you know. It could be, somebody threatens you with violence, well, what is that? Is it violence or is it bullying?
What if somebody shouts at you and you recoil, fall back and injure yourself in a fall out of your chair? You have been injured as a result of an action of another division. They may not have touched you and this kind of encompasses all that stuff.
You know, I also think that as particularly in certain climates, there's a lot of emotional bullying. And I've seen that happen and it still should have, it can cause adverse impacts to employees that could lead to violence, you know, as you pointed out. Self-inflicted violence, a response in a violent way. I would not want to sort out two policies.
Some years ago, we.
No, that's your debate.
No, I were debating and I was giving you that.
I didn't mean to.
Dick said he's comfortable with the way it is and that's fine, but the door is open if we wanna change it down the road.
If you always, as I say, policies are not written in stone.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
It's not on a stone tablet out there. You can change it.
And questions come up, we will undoubtedly revisit this and see if we need something more. Is there a motion to, just to start?
What I wanna, yeah, do you have that?
Yeah, there's a motion to approve the workplace violence, violence policy version two dated nine seventeen, two thousand nineteen, to be distributed to the collective bargaining units and other employees for their review.
Okay, that's it.
Have a second. Is there further discussion? I just wanted to get the motions so discussions focused on this. Is there further discussion? If you set the moment on this. Further discussion?
I don't have further discussion.
Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for putting that together. I do appreciate that. And that'll go on the new TA's list to be sure that.
Well, what I'll do is I'll distribute it and ask everybody to respond in like three weeks and then they'll come back to you and then you'll approve it.
And you said that probably MIAA, MIA.
Yes.
Then did you have training?
Yeah, and as you're looking through your board goals, I would just put in here, training. Because there's, you know, I can't do it all. But I do think somewhere in here, there needs to be more of a focus on training. The more I'm here, the more I'm sensing there hasn't been the kinds of trainings, whether it's on workplace violence or whether it's, you know, for example, working in confined spaces or.
Yeah, no, I think that makes less sense.
So if, as you look at your goals, maybe under important is to, you know, implement a training, training programs in the organization.
I'd like to move on to the minutes. Looking at the minutes of Monday, August twenty ninth, two thousand nineteen, I noticed that, Dick, you had suggested a few changes.
It's probably best to just go right into the Dick version.
I was gonna go right and I was gonna ask if there was a motion and if a motion was to be made, that they'd be, the motion be made specifically to include the version edited by Lynn and by.
So moved.
Second?
Yep, second. Yeah, because we always say to approve the minutes as amended and that is the amendment.
We're saying by amended.
As amended.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's, that's fine. I just wanted you to show them that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All of those, that's unanimous, so we'll go on that, okay?
And the next one is September ninth and the same thing, if we look into Dick's version, he had a couple of minor edits there, so the motion would be on that version.
I just changed the name from John.
Yes.
The amended, go ahead.
That's what I said. We're looking at your version with the two minor edits that you have made.
And Dick, I just wanna comment, I really appreciate you putting the written ones out for us.
Good. So did you make the motion?
I did not, if you wanna make it. I can make it. Motion to approve the minutes of the board's selecting meeting held on September ninth, two thousand nineteen as amended.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously and thank you very much. So we'll get out of all these open windows here. So we now are down to, there's no other minutes, are there?
No.
Okay, great. So this, we're gonna have twenty-five minutes that we can, just to keep this from getting a bit too long, to talk about the goals and objectives. And I'm working from.
Yeah, which one?
This very, yeah, this version right here, which is kind of a high level summary. It's the one that's called Goals FY 2020 hyphen eight dot twenty-nine dot nineteen.
It's the one that says urgent, important, ongoing.
Yes.
That's the only one that has those categories.
Yeah, exactly. And so I'd like to just kind of go around, Lynn, start with you, then you, Dick and the new Boyd. And any thoughts, comments, concerns, questions you have? And let's kind of collect those and then see if as a result of all of those, we can start to clarify, yes, this belongs and, you know, give you clarifications that we need. There's plenty here to keep the town and those of us who are working in it and for it very busy. But do you wanna make any comments?
Sure. So two things that I would modify slightly, but still keep them on here. So under the urgent, the HR audit, I think that's important to do. I think, as Robin has pointed out, there are other policies and procedures that are not being, either we don't have them or they're not being followed or there isn't training. People don't know to follow them. So that, that I think needs to be maybe expanded beyond just the HR audit to incorporate the training and to incorporate other policies outside of that that may be lacking.
So what would you do on that? I guess I'm not sure what the action is.
Are you talking about training and?
Training and is the HR audit the only area where you feel we don't have policies? Like we just did workplace. We're about to look at.
It's not the only area, but it's, it's the biggest area.
Is there anything else you've come across that?
Well, you know, some boards have policies on the use of the town commons or boards have policies on, you know, liquor license applications. I think you have one on that. I'm not sure. But we're trying to put all those on the website as we find them. But no, what I see is really updating the HR policies.
Okay, and the other that ties in is that forty B regulations. So there are policies that are lacking and we split them into categories. That's under important strategic.
The forty B regulations is really the ZBA. I don't understand antown plan. Forty B regulations.
Oh. I've talked with Martha Morrison about this and I have to admit, I think I wrote this up so we could say antown plan. The idea is that right now it's just sort of wherever you want, you know, apply for a forty B if you could put a single residential house in there. And the idea of a plan is that, for instance, as, you know, this is just one example, but as we talk about downtown, there's a lot of interest by the planning board and by many individuals in considering to put affordable housing as part of the downtown solution. If we could get twenty-four affordable units downtown, we would cut ourselves down to only needing about five or six. More around downtown. So that's to me, the town plan is sort of.
Town housing plan.
Town housing plan, thank you. Town, yeah, okay, we'll put town housing plan in there then.
I'd say town affordable housing.
Town affordable housing plan. And we don't have one now and I'm not sure that that is something that can be resolved, just, you know, a little bit of work for a month and we're done.
Yeah, the forty B at least, Robin, you're making headway regular.
Yes, I've asked town council to take the format that they've developed for communities and adapt it for Topsfield. So town council has that instruction. I'm calling them on Monday. But I'm going to be kind of pushing the ZBA. You appoint the ZBA here. So it's your board, your committee, so, you know, I'm acting on your behalf.
That needs to be in place so that we can respond when they come back related to.
I've asked for a timeline, you know, how.
That has to be in place to give them the teeth to be able to enforce.
Let's not clear with the current application that anything we pass now can be retroactive.
I don't think they've applied.
They have to apply yet?
No, they've asked for input. They're working with the state. I don't know how quickly we can get these.
Oh, so they haven't actually made an application from it to us?
But I think it's important for the board to communicate.
That's a good point.
I think it needs, really should come from the board saying to the ZBA in a nice way, we request that you expedite approval of forty B regulations that will be coming forth from town council.
We're gonna have to have a hearing.
Yeah. You can do it pretty quickly, but.
So you're helping by getting the forty B regs together, so they don't have to invent this from the old cloth.
No, no. No, but when they come to town, they need to.
Yeah, when they arrive and that work is done. Okay, I think that's a very good point.
And not just say, well, we'll hear one month and approve them the next month. They might have to expedite it.
Yep, okay. Well, you will let us know when they get it in their hands and then we can ask for expediting?
Well, I think I'd do it in advance. We understand this, that, and we ask that the ZBA cooperate fully and implement these plans as regulations as quickly as possible.
Should we take a vote on that so that it is an action of the board?
Should.
I think, I think we should. We don't know what they're gonna be, but I think it's.
Anything's better than what you have now.
Well, we have nothing now.
Yeah, we're not dictating what they.
Nothing right now. And this will give us some more control, whether it's sufficient and they can always add, change, adapt if necessary.
So you mean to arbitrarily approve something we haven't read, so to speak?
We're not approving the board. No, not approving the regulations, just asking them to expedite, but as an action of the board. So I entertain a motion to, for the board to send a letter, virtual or whatever form, to the zoning board of appeals at Topsfield requesting that they, in advance, that they expedite approval of forty B regulations when they have received draft copies through the town administrator's office.
Yeah, they don't have to approve what is being sent over, but they have to approve a set of regulations.
We just like them, please look at them quickly.
Right, and expedite the process of adopting forty B regulations.
Exactly, so, and I would.
That's right, review and adoption, is that what she said?
Yes.
Okay, review and adoption.
Yeah.
Of.
Forty B regulations.
Of, yeah, but the point is, is we're not telling them to adopt those.
Right, just forty B regulations. They have to adopt them.
They can make changes, they can request adjustments.
Modify what they want, add things. They're getting a template to work from.
I just need the board to let them know it's important.
You write the letter.
And I guess, first of all, we have a second. If we approve this, Robin, I would ask if you could work with Debbie to craft such a letter and we'll sign it. So that it does reflect the concerns that Dick expresses and that it's clear we're not approving specifics, we're asking them to act rapidly.
I'm confident that Robin knows exactly what.
I have not a doubt at all. So we have a first and a second. Is there further discussion?
Who's second?
Boyd did. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Great, thank you on that. So in a sense, this sort of comes off right now in terms of, well, it's a goal, but we should have.
It's still there. It's still needs to come through. You're gonna have to.
Do we want on the goals, just a number of action items that we should be doing? Because goals tend to be things that you're kind of reaching for and there's no reason why we can't necessarily put them down. But when you make the list too long or you mix too many things with it, you kind of, you don't really achieve some movement forward. This is something we're gonna do, we have to do. For example, a cable license and things like that. Is it goals or is it a to-do list? It's just for discussion, because I see that to me, a lot of what's here is simply a to-do list.
But I also think, Dick, by posting this.
Well, Rob, that they're action items.
They're action items. And by posting them, it lets the town know, these are things we're following up with, maybe fairly straightforward. Town gets some good idea of what we're doing, because we're doing more than just doing the budget, you know, the normal stuff. I think it's important to help people see that we have a view, a vision of the town for the year.
It was similar to last year. I mean, we had developed the budget, update the website, you know, conduct an IT audit. There were action items.
Could I just go over a few things with you right here?
Yes, please.
Number two, hire the police chief. I told you I would be doing that and posting it in October, so we know where you're going and there's no question with the new administrator coming in. The HR audit, you're actually gonna vote on the contract next week.
Okay.
So, and I'm meeting with that person in October.
And this is with, with Collins Center?
Yes. So, I mean, some of these things, you're getting very close to being able to say we're doing. The, I think you've got, gotten input on number six, you know, looking at maybe bringing those under the board of selection, but that's a longer term goal.
And maybe the wording should be different to evaluate the most effective.
Right.
Organization structure, you know, as opposed to creating.
Look at organizational structure.
I think it's better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate taking DPW out as the fait accompli and we're just trying to make it happen.
Well, so that might move under important. I don't know. But I do, I do wanna say that I'm also going to ask next week that you vote on the cable committee charge because Dick had some input on that. Unless you don't mind and I can just say you've adopted it.
Yep.
But Dick has.
As I said in my note to you, it really needs to be reviewed by, like Boyd, have you seen it?
I have not seen.
No.
And I think you wanna talk about.
Okay, so it's on your agenda next week.
Before we, before it comes to the board.
Maybe it's on board docs.
It's on board docs.
I have some ideas there.
Where?
I wanna look at.
I just put it up. It's. I don't think I've released it yet, but it's.
Okay.
You'll have it tonight.
Where'd you, where'd you put it?
I sent it to.
And Deb says it's on board docs.
For her input before she sent it out.
So it's in board docs?
No, it'll be, they'll have it tonight. It's have an active. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So that is in progress. The forty B, at least, we're going to get those. And hopefully that will all happen before I leave. And I suggest under important putting, talk about develop a training program, for example, with Maya. I think.
Safety training program?
Well, a variety of them.
Oh, just in general.
I wouldn't, I think in some cases, your boards and committees could use, it could be a training on holding hearings.
We should be doing that on a regular basis and some of them need to be repeated on a regular basis.
Yes, conflict of interest, there's all sorts of things. But that's a sort of a, a more strategic, longer term process. Website improvements, we had our, on our next meeting and you'll begin to see, they're going to load it up. And you're going to, layer by layer, we're building in. And I just got a call on, so that's ongoing. I mean, that, that is sort of self-managing as long as your administrator keeps up with it. And the technology systems, somebody's coming in, regional IT support, somebody's gonna come in in early October.
Okay.
To talk, to interview people and I mentioned I have your plant, your.
Review.
Yeah.
That's a great document.
So that's moving ahead in October. So as you look at these, we're making progress. So as you look at these, we're making progress simultaneously. That's all I want to say.
And as we should be. We're in FY twenty.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah.
So on that one though, that we just talked about, the regional IT, so that subject only relates to the grant and trying to do the IT, regionalization, right? That's what that says? Okay. Because, for example, we had had, and I think it's part of the work that you did last year to see what things we might do to improve efficiencies with, that's not one of our goals coming up, in other words.
Well, under that technology systems, it's technology system improvements dash regional IT support study. That's two components really.
So it's two different things then, right?
It's two different things.
So shouldn't we, shouldn't we kind of meant the two different things then? Is that the case?
One is very distinct. It's a grant that's being conducted that we will be participating in, but it's...
So that's one.
It's on its own. The other one is taking a look at the review that was done and there was a whole host of things that could be done very soon to start to make, you know, efficient improvements.
Because as John says, we'd like to put this out for the public, or not like to, we're gonna do it and then put it out to the public. I think it'd be very nice for the public to see that we're trying to do things to affect the budget, so to speak, by efficiencies and how we operate.
The only thing I would say is that there's some things in there that we probably want to mask, that we don't want to share because they're a little too detailed for the general public to be able to see about our operating systems, et cetera, that we don't want to share publicly.
No, no, the concept that would, doing something with application systems to improve the efficiency.
I think...
I thought you were saying, I thought you were saying share the review.
No, 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 no.
Okay, because as I said, there's too much detail in there.
No, 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 no. I mean, if we're gonna share this goal and in the process of reading the goals, they have to see what we're doing to improve the operation of a new administrator. That's, you have to do it, doesn't approve. You gotta do it. Chief, gotta do it. HR, maybe that does improve. Okay. Internet security, it looks like something you should do. Collective bargaining, ah, you gotta do that. Oh, okay, you look at the organization of town, maybe we're improving...
By the way, I changed that to...
What have you done so far to help my taxes? Well, you know, maybe we created something or whatever. The idea is what are we doing?
The review management structure for departments with boards of commissioners could have cost implications, we hope savings. Long-term financial planning, including cost savings, that one is very definitely looking at how we might be able to save money looking down the road.
Yes.
And some of these other things, technology systems improvements could arguably be very much cost savings.
But it's only broken into two. It's the second one that's specific.
I've broken that into two now, separated out regional IT support study.
So the idea is we have some in there.
Yeah, yeah.
It's important, I think, to have that because we're putting it out there for people to at least see that we're in goals, trying to move efficiency to the operation.
I'm personally comfortable with this list, the way it's evolving right now. And recognize that this has a lifespan of one year.
Do we really want to put priorities on them right now? Or maybe just the order in which we list them represents a degree of priority? Because already, for example, we can move them at any time, but if we stop putting priorities in it, this is more important than something else. The DPW thing, we changed wording, but we also moved it around because of circumstances. Why don't I just have the list, but I would suggest putting them in the order that we might think one is more important than the other.
Well, you might talk about some things are more strategic than others. Downtown revitalization, that's a strategic...
That's a long one. It's gonna keep going on.
It's strategic, operational, if you want to break it without saying one's more important.
I like the same one. My suggestion is one list, but I'm open to anything.
Yeah, and I think people by and large can see the difference between those that are strategic and those, you know, operational and, and, you know, tactical and strategic. I kind of like the idea of maybe making at least a distinction between things that we're sort of expecting are gonna get done this year versus things that we're gonna continue to working on but are not gonna end it this year. So that's the downtown revitalization.
The hierarchy and things like that.
Long-term financial planning, that's gonna go on and on and on. But we should get the cable contract negotiations pretty much underway.
Because there's dates given for that. There's dates essentially given for the chief, the TA, thing like that. Agreed. Two seconds.
Another strategic item would be the technology system improvements.
I agree. That's gonna start now, but continue. That always...
Right. Website improvements, we're just doing that. That should just be done.
Yep.
But it should be largely done by the time I, I leave.
Would it be comfortable if we put it into two lists? That way, just break it into...
Action items and strategic.
Yeah, sort of strategic...
Good idea.
Yeah, action item, depending what the titles are, but I'm comfortable having two lists like that.
We take up the urgent, especially when it comes to like collective bargaining.
No, that's not it.
But action items would be, you know, everything in that, down to number four.
Internal audit and so on would start.
I'd like to know what to do.
That could, that could be longer term. It's gonna start this year.
Right.
Collective bargaining, that definitely this year. I'm willing to put review management structure for departments with boards of commissioners. I'm willing to put that as longer term.
Yes, strategic.
That to do something sooner or not, and I'm looking for progress, not completion immediately on that, so.
Well, they could be, they're also placeholders for next year, very...
Well, I think they are and, I mean, I think points were made that maybe we can't do this by May. I'm always an optimist, but maybe not, so I have to recognize they may be very right on that.
At any rate, wherever you put them, a number of these things are moving forward.
Yep. Would you take a pass based upon the conversation we've just had, putting them in two lists, please? And send the other around?
They're just gonna be wording.
Two lists, yeah. Keep these items as we've talked about, with the separations as we've talked about. And in two lists, sort of, you know, those that are gonna happen and are important, people know is happening. And then also, I may as well put higher treasurer in there too. And then let's...
And then, then have strategic.
Then we'll have strategic and those will be ones, action expected this year, but not completion. They'll be the ongoing or they will...
There'll be things that are done to...
I think it's a good, a good distinction.
Is the long-term financial planning our five-year plan? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure what that is. I am going to be working with Catherine, I'm not sure if it's next week or the week after, but we're, we're going to sit down and update the financial forecast.
It could be including five-year capital. The thing I'm thinking about is I've seen no plan that explicitly calls out when and how much we think at all might cost to redo the fire station, might cost to redo the police station.
Well, in, in terms of that, you might want to say, it says include cost savings, but, you know, capitalism costs savings. So when you look at a financial plan, what, what are the components of that? Would be operational...
Operational, where we try to find savings, where we can...
Capital, but I think it, it all, you know, financial planning doesn't always equal. You can find cost savings, but you lose often services. Or you can, you know, sometimes I say, do you, do you want to save money or do you wanna, you know, you can save money.
Well...
But you don't want to live, in most cases, but what you can do is mitigate costs.
Well, I think there's mitigating costs and I think certainly in Masco, a number of times, we did some reorganization. We didn't save costs, but we increased services or redesigned them to benefit today's needs and so on.
But you should have, when I look at that, when I look at long-term financial planning, I look at operational capital and you know where you're going. There's a, there's a, there's a plan. It's like we have a five-year capital plan. So